Thank you. Right, guys, yes.
Recording. Okay.
Thank you. We present, so thank you. Oh, good. This is my experience that we find. Because they made, uh, he made. We do what today. Okay, somebody else. You do, you don't regret it. And I'm not trying to take any money away from your playground. That's really, it just, we would not have spent that much money because we've got more pressing bills across the street. Except they said, if you spend ten, we will match. I don't know. When did you buy this? Well, you got that in your pocket when you went to. Yeah. Right before we. This has not been a business that has even been brought to you, like I said, into your pocket. Okay? Okay, please. I read it, I want to read. So you're gonna put it on for us?
Yes. I just said, you have, we have a conversation. I just wanted to let people know.
Yes, I agree. So we're not paying back any money on Zoom or?
I'm not sure. Uh, I just record everything. I'm just, they're, they're taking services to put public information out. It's probably.
Yeah, I did the interviews go yesterday. Yeah. How was it? Oh, wait. What did he say? Didn't that three? Oh, for the tree. Three pies. Now, that was just for the, was that for the? That's a lot to for the. No, no, no. Two, two, three, four, three. Okay. Why had that backwards on the left? Well, I hope you have something good with the tar to my toe. Yep. It's me to my home. And then a new way to put this back is closely. Good evening. Hello. Hey.
You see how cold it is up here since I've got lots of counsel? The rat nest is gone.
Look at it.
Me.
Oh, yeah.
No. I threw all myself away and bought extra. I said, all myself. All that mess was under my voice.
Yeah, we did.
I bought, brought my three garbage bags up here. I built a house. And hey, I think everybody, uh, same fault, same job.
But we can get everywhere we want to say. Trying to, and you can read them, we're gonna have to pick them over there. Our paper good there. Would you not agree to that? I have paper off this. Okay.
I said, come on.
Let me ask you. I see you. You're in victory. Uh, no, what? Only got to be that one. I'm looking at you. Got a big rack. Oh. Oh. I'm a leader. No, I'm a president. I'm a president. I'm very, I'm very. Okay. I'm ready. Not to talk about that. They both are nice. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, this is probably my source.
Hello. Okay. Yes, in the part of the.
Let me start.
Looking at what's. I got to the ground. I'm not even developing, where you develop. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just trying to create it. You know. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't update for me on that. No, I think, I think, I think, I think, I think all the things that I was telling you about. Okay. That's, that's every guy.
I'm not really good. All right.
You don't. The deal. I think that's hard. But I'm just going to say, you sound like you're saying, I'm going to go. We're only going to say. Well, I'm happy. There's all. If we can put those down that way. Let's see. I'm only here today. I just. I'm going to delete. Okay, yes, okay. All right. All right, ladies. Okay. All right. Yeah, we need my student. It could be possible for him. If I can put you close around. See your first round. It's worth a lot of the ball. You might just be right.
Oh. Hello, guys. How you doing, brother? And it's nice to meet you. Another day, another big one.
And if you go, I'm going to.
I'll try to. Try to make it from how. Try. I can't think about the day. Open again a little bit sometimes. We know about Monday, but next week, I'm just like, I'll make.
Well, maybe that will be a good. Here the question. You can get that back for you.
Um, do. What we really all believe is that nobody comes up here. We really.
That's the matter. That's the problem.
Right.
I'm ready.
Don't worry about it. When I came out here.
I'm just going to stay together.
This, you can glue it or something.
Yeah, you glue them together. But I think it does mean a slide.
Yeah, that is a little slide thing. Comes up.
But don't throw them away. Feel flexible.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Mine, mine doesn't like to cooperate. At all. Think.
You have.
Mine doesn't, mine don't like to cooperate. And mine was, um.
All right. Now, we. Now, we pay for it. It's what's there.
Thank you. Yeah. Just. Are y'all trying to pull the best out?
You guys do.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna lead on the American Rescue Fund. I'll tell you. I'm. I'm gonna, I'm gonna swear this is all. Hey. Oh, thank you. Me and Kevin, we are.
Now, I'm gonna drop in. It's already downloaded. We go to, we just go to download. Last time, I already write the. I don't have to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got it.
Okay. I'll do. I'll go. Call us to, uh, uh, call finance to, to order. Uh. Thank you, everyone, for staying here. Uh, I'm just gonna be careful. I will pray. We'll sit, go ahead, and we'll, we did. Okay. You know, thank you, thank you for loving us. Thank you for having a plan and a purpose. Thank you that your ways are above our ways here, Lord. Thank you that your laws are not, or that our laws are not your laws. That we can trust you and put our hope and trust in you. So, um, you do go before you hear what just word says. Is it anyone lacks wisdom that they should ask? Would you be generous without thine accord? And we ask you for that tonight, uh, the sermon, as we discuss C B C. Amen.
Amen.
I'm just really saying, I told you. Our political flag of the United States of America and to the government, what we're just saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just, uh, just a brief, uh. One person. One or two people. I still gotta sneak into the microphone, you know, I am. I, uh. I checked with, uh, the president expert on American Rescue, B M S S. Just to kind of make sure that I, uh, and things that we had to discuss about in committee, if we were correct in, in thinking that we could use the American Rescue Fund as the purposes that we thought we could. He, he affirmed, yes, and they're pretty, they want you to spend the money. They don't want you to. But if somebody's pitching fund or, you know, something like that, and they want you to spend it. So I think we're in a good shape. It goes right along with the tag and starting in the, in the budget work team. Um, basically, what he encouraged us to do, he said, we were smart for right now to pull these funds out of the general budget until we made sure that we were spending. I don't know. It would be approved. Once we decide now, we probably begin the budget to have these funds. Let's look at the American, these are what we do. These are kind of things we discuss. If you're kind of looking at, uh, the American Rescue Funds, estimated two point one billion dollars at top. These are items that we pulled straight out of the budget that we assumed was the mayor's budget they came to. So, okay. Um, we just put a, we took out, put, put it on this page, and we exited this bill. We talked about, um, you know, the, the item wrote over there is the, you know, all the cameras. We have earned the contract for, I think it's like four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. And the next one that we decided we thought would be a good idea is a fund was all the, uh, maintenance and improvements to all the public buildings. You know, this, again, straight out of, straight out of the post budget. Next was we talked about, we wanted to make sure that public works and all the equipment that they requested and needed. Those are the next two lines, the, another litter back, uh. She was, she was, she was jet her. And there was some more. I think it got cut off in the description that was in the public works apartment. I think some of that description got cut off. So there's other pieces of equipment to make up that four hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. And then the line below the hundred and sixty eight thousand is the clam bug. Uh, just coming down to the next line, we talked about making sure that the fire department got the vehicles that they needed. Uh, again, one line lower, the, uh, landfill, uh, landfill, they needed, uh, some additional equipment. Every bit of, uh, every bit of what, um, they asked for, I think we talked about, would be a good thing to, uh, fund. That leaves us, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip twelve right now. That leaves us with about, uh, that's one point, at least, was about three hundred thousand dollars in American Rescue. I, when I initially, uh, made my comments about information technology department, it was my, the way it was labeled in the budget that came to us was for fiber construction. My, uh, my staunch opposition to that was there's plenty of fiber in Selma. We can lease dark fiber, and we can complete our, our, our network until we can get some more money. After, after, um, I'm talking to Mr. Henderson, he, he explained to me that it's not the fiber construction. He, he needs the data processing center for our network. Right now, he is stuck in a hole, right back in.
Was that in a room?
It, it is, I see it.
I see it.
It's a, we, we need to, now that I understand better what he's saying, I recommend we give him as much money as we can give him in order to start working on that thing. Now, we need to take money out of public workers or whatever. I don't think so. So, I mean, they asked for five hundred thousand. We put two hundred thousand in there. And that's just about, that's one point nine, that's one being nine hundred and ninety thousand, two point one. So the things that we did not fund, and I, I think the mayor has made some suggestions on this sheet. And it goes pretty much in line with what we're talking about. Uh, again, I, me personally, just as a member of the finance committee in the council, I'd love to have this implemented or prioritized. And we've got this extra money. You know, if he, if he tells us, well, you know, there's a hundred thousand dollars, we really don't need to spend in public works. It would just be nice if we had it. I'd rather put it over towards the I T project. I'm, that's the one I'm, I'm buying that. I don't have any, any, I would like it included in to tell us, you know, what takes precedence. Then, um, the things that we did not, uh, really incorporate on this suggestion was the, some of the cemetery, all the cemetery equipment. Uh, and again, there's a hundred and ten thousand dollars left that is working out of American Rescue Funds. So, um, just coming down the line of public assistance. Then a bit program. You know, we all had discussions about, it's probably a great program, but we just don't have any information. Uh, code enforcement, identifying the. Drawers, it was a ten thousand dollar clue for that. We didn't really know what that meant. So we pulled in, um, a vehicle for public buildings. Uh, we weren't real sure about that. So we kind of pulled it aside.
How much was that?
Eighty four hundred dollars. Y'all tell me if there's something that jumps out, I want to move back over.
Okay. The vehicle for public do, the car.
Eighty four hundred dollars. I think that eight thousand four hundred.
So what number vehicle is it? Is it an office or a brand new or what?
I think that is.
Is it just one?
I think it was gonna be from the surplus. I don't remember.
Surplus, they, they down the.
Yeah, right for a vehicle. I don't know what it. Miss Smith, if he was on Zoom, she might have known. We can always ask. We can always ask. Um. And then there were some other repairs right under that planning development. It was at the eighteen thousand. That's right. Okay. And then the tourism, there was fifty thousand dollar proposed, uh, budget item for two big determiners, work to be done at Riverfront Future Development. And then the community outreach program was a program that, uh.
Can I see such a riverfront?
Yeah.
What is riverfront? It's not joy, it's.
No, it said Riverfront Park and Amphitheater Call.
So you're gonna, if I, if we need time, is the work gonna be done on the amphitheater? Is the repair, what they gonna be doing, work on the amphitheater?
Yeah.
My, my understanding, Councilwoman Thomas, was that that was forty thousand dollars to paint.
Just paint.
To paint. That's what I got. Probably more than that, but I remember distinctly in one of these years, it's fifty thousand dollars to paint. I remember hearing that. So it might be some more, but I remember.
Yeah. Yes, uh, a painting charge, the amphitheater painted for two thousand dollars. It's fifty one support for a lot. All right.
And that's in your basement.
Oh. On the number five, tell us, oh, all they wanna do is why we didn't read this scripture right here.
I don't see them, man.
I see everybody, you know, right. We move back to get something being of all things, they want to send their child, but see all the way. That they're. What do you got there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I don't see it. It's on. It's on the side. On, oh, on the side. I'll say.
Yeah, I got a version. Yeah, thank you. Where, where I made this.
I don't see, I see all the.
It mentions everything, but it also says all buildings three hundred and seventy eight thousand, and the line is only two sixty eight. So I wonder if we can.
We moved some of that.
Oh, are you? Oh, there you go. Oh, so people, oh, people, uh, uh, more to all of them. People are talking to you. Yeah, it's very, very sweet. It's not, who's saving me now? There's no, okay. Is that, can we now?
I said nothing, you listen. You're gonna be different, man.
Well, if you have that, it's pretty, same, but, yeah, see how we did. I like really, because they are. Yeah, yeah. That's good.
Well.
I got thirty six eight on me, you have a breakdown.
Yeah, it should be three seventy eight, I, I think so.
Yeah, thirty seven?
Yeah, and that just took up the extra hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I was giving one hour.
Yeah.
And, and, and everybody, for me personally, I think we need to bring all of, you know, the club.
Everyone, that's why we want to.
Yeah, yeah, so I agree with that request they made, we need to get these buildings up and going, uh.
And that's why I don't, that's why I knew one thing I want to do.
You know, because hopefully, COVID will end one day, and when it does, we need to have these facilities.
This is where we're kind of ending the day, so, you know.
I quote.
Yep, go ahead.
With the list that the mayor sent us. I quote, you, that you. You know, you got, oh, where you got the salary again, quickly. So what do you mean, kind of salary, when you put, when we just gave, um, what, what more salary we're gonna give the public for it all?
I don't think he realized, we went ahead and pushed the racist of the place, and it was just short of a million dollars, we went ahead and put that into budget, he might not correct that.
Um. The, okay. I'm, that's the question. Can you get me in here? This is the mayor for the office, we, you know, the, they come in, I read this, I mean, is we, or this budget that we have, will be one thing to be, whether it's going to be a problem, will be, uh, compared to what we're taking in, this is the, uh, that. I will be came.
You said last year, you mean, you said that in the last year, last year, this, this year?
This, this, I'm talking about, this, 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 this budget, to, to run out there, in the long run, you know, we put the salary in, uh, we put the police salary in the budget. And, uh, with all of the other things that we put in the budget, and we talked about in, in, not, and then after you say, come back in, but, uh, the American risk, uh, I don't see any more. So my thing is, this year is, we, you know, we haven't even needed other staff. Right. So my problem is, this is why I'm looking at, uh, this, this year, uh, twenty twenty, but we got, what we took, what we taking in. Did we compare with all of what we doing right now, for the, that, uh, we would be?
We're actually ahead of budget, we're ahead of where they, all we will be running wise. Is that what you're asking?
My question is, is. Who would be. Or maybe who's got, and also, we have not even mentioned the pay rate for the other.
Yeah. And that's a good question.
And I think that it was lobbying, and, uh, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we have, we need to see the, uh, pay plan. And, and it's supposed to be, I've submitted to, 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 uh, personnel, so you know it's supposed to go back into the budget, and we get past it. And, uh, I was worried about the pace of, of rising, we are, this, we got, I'm something we have to do, okay?